Well, I just heard the day that Roanex has gone up, so. I said I just heard the day that Roanex has gone up, so my vertical bids are fixing to go up. So far, lumber's up, concrete's up, Roanex is up. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Matter of fact, I talked to Tim Foley last week about that. What are you doing up this early, Josh?
All right. It's 10:00 AM. Let's get this show on the road. You ready, Bill? Staff ready? All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, 10:00 AM, March 23rd, 2021. I'd like to welcome everybody this morning to the Tuesday, March 23rd, meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Dennison. Our first order of business will be to take roll call. Here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Spencer Redline.
Here.
Mary Kara.
Here.
And Susan Arthur.
Here.
All right. Okay, a little housekeeping before we get started. Planning Commission is a recommending body, so with the exception of Platts and site plans, which our approval here is final, all other recommendations will be sent to City Council for final approval, which I believe will be on their April 5th meeting. So those items that are on our agenda today will be April 5th. If you'd like to speak when we give you opportunity, if you'd like to speak on a particular case, we asked if you'd come to the lectern, that you would give us your name and address for the record. And we're gonna put the three-minute limit on speakers today, not that we'll need it, but we're gonna go ahead and put it on there this morning. All right, first item of business to be to approve the minutes from our February 23rd meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
My second.
I have first with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, so item 3B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. This is item 3B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a site plan for proposed expansion to closets and garages located at 2901 West Morton, case number 2020-062SP. The proposed expansion consists of approximately 29,000 square feet and an additional 206 self-storage units. Project is located within the highway-oriented and corridor district. City staff recommends approval. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. And the current zoning is commercial. So if you think back to January 4th, City Council adopted the conditional use permit pending site plan plat civil engineering approval, and the plat was previously approved by this body on the 12th of January. And city staff has also approved the civil engineering plans pending site plan approval. So this would be the final step before they could issue or be submitting their documents for building review. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and city staff does recommend approval.
Questions to staff? Hey, this is not a public hearing, but is anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed site plan for closets and garages.
I'll second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen none, motion carries. Item 3C.
This is item 3C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a site plan for a proposed independent bank branch located at 900 North US Highway 75, case number 2020-011SP. So the property is located within the highway-oriented and corridor district. Here's the property here, outlined in yellow, on the northeast corner of 75 and Crawford. Here's the zoning. It's currently zoned local retail. Here are the elevations of the building as well. Keep in mind that though it is within the highway overlay district, 100% masonry is required. This type of material that looks like wood is like an ephesus or, I'm sorry, a hardy plank, which is allowed in that section of the ordinance within the highway overlay. And here's the site plan. You have entrances off of Crawford, with your fire lane, a three-car lane, I'm sorry, a three-lane drive-through with adequate stacking. I'm a present for any questions that you may have.
Questions to staff? Again, this is not a public hearing, but if you are here and you'd like to speak in favor of this request?
Good morning. I'm Jonathan Hake with Cross Engineering, 1720 West Virginia, McKinney. The civil engineer on this project, I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions to these here? Anyone else speak in favor? Number one in opposition. Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed site plan for an independent bank branch located at 900 North US Highway 75.
Second.
Motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to public hearings. So we will go to item 4A.
Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the south 33 feet of lots 1 through 3, Block 20 Stevens Edition, located at 309 South Fannin Avenue, case number 2020-134RP. So the applicant is requesting approval of a replat creating one contiguous lot off of the back of what were three lots previously. The proposed replat does not meet the requirements in the residential infill overlay. Private sanitary sewer service encroaches onto this lot and must be relocated. An sewer extension is also required. City staff does recommend approval. So here's the plat here. And let me pull up on my end. The lot is 33 feet wide by 75 feet deep and measures 2,475 square feet. So speaking with the applicant and the builder that they have lined up, they do have a plan that will fit this particular lot if platted. And even though they might be kind of tight on size requirements and area requirements, they do believe they have a plan drawn up to meet the other requirements listed in the residential infill overlay. So this is a public hearing, and city staff does recommend approval.
Questions to staff? This is a lot that was owned, I believe, by DDF, and was sold off to the developers. It's kind of a peculiar situation. But I do think that under the circumstances, since it was a branch, basically, of the city that sold it to the developers, that kind of put them into a hardship under this particular situation. So let's keep that in mind, I think, as we approach this. Anything else for Bill?
Just a question, if there's gonna be any problem with utilities on that property?
Yes, ma'am. So the developer is working with Public Works on rerouting, drawing up plans and rerouting sewer line. So if you were to look at this aerial here, you can see 500 West Crawford. From what we can tell, this piece of property, these remaining pieces, were left over or broken up somehow off of the back of 500 West Crawford. So their sewer line actually runs across this property. So before a building permit would be able to be issued, that sewer line would need to be rerouted.
So that would be the only problem is relocating that sewer line?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Bill?
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Okay, anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final civil engineering approval, relocation of the encroaching private sewer service, and adequate sewer line extension.
I'll second.
Motion, second, Spence? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Item 4B.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the north 50 feet of lots 15 and 16, Block 21 Stevens Edition, located at 411 South Fannin, case number 2020-135RP. The applicant's requesting approval of replat creating one contiguous lot. The proposed replat meets all residential infill overlay requirements. And as with the last item, private sanitary sewer service does encroach onto this lot and must also be relocated or an easement provided. So here's the proposed lot. This one does meet the dimensions. I'm sorry, the zoning dimension requirements. Here's an aerial of the property. And as with the last lot, or the last item, the two houses that are directly south of this property that front onto Morgan have sewer service running north into the alley. So the developer will be working with those private property owners to either relocate those sewer services, most likely along Fannin, or provide an easement for the property at 505 West Morgan, because that's towards the rear, shouldn't affect the building. So as long as those are shown on the final plat before it's filed, it should be appropriate. And the zoning is multifamily one. So staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, and we're present for any questions that y'all might have.
Questions to staff? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final civil engineering approval, relocation of the encroaching private sewer service, and adequate sewer line extension.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Redd, one second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Item 4C.
Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of Lot 1, Hallet 75, number 1, located on the northeast corner of Crawford Street and US 75. So this is the plat for the site plan of the new independent bank. The plat will be filed towards near end of construction of the project. So that way, any kind of easements need to be adjusted or relocated, we can make that happen before the plat's filed. So again, as with the site plan, here's the subject property outlined in yellow on the northeast corner of 75 and West Crawford. The zoning is local retail. I'm present for any questions that you might have.
Questions to staff? Sir? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final civil engineering and site plan approval and the installation of the required utilities.
Second.
Second, Mary Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Item 4D.
Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to change the zoning of the subject property from local retail to single-family five located at 314 East Hull Street. This is case number 2021-119Z. The proposed zoning district change complies with the comprehensive plan. City staff does recommend approval. That says replat, but it's a rezone. Here's the subject property. You have East Hull running east to west, South Travis directly to the west, running north to south, and then Crockett kind of snakes around and goes north. As you can see, the area is predominantly developed in a residential manner. And City Council recently rezoned the property directly to the west to single-family five as well. I think for the same building, builder, rather. So I'm present for any questions that you may have, and city staff does recommend approval.
Don't think we have anything.
No.
Anybody want to keep it local retail? I'm still trying to figure it out.
I got that way to begin with.
All right. All right. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? All right, anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail to single-family five as five zoning district.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Item 4E.
Item 4E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a dance hall and food truck park located, I'm sorry, for Jake's Place, located at 4801 US 7591. The adopted comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed in mixed commercial land uses. Jake's Place recently received, or previously received, a conditional use permit to operate a food truck with some alcohol sales. Their business model has kind of changed in recent past, and they're wanting to expand that to not just beer and wine, but to alcohol, mixed beverage, mixed beverages, as well as having a more predominant dance floor. Kind of changing the use a little bit from a food truck park. So they're keeping that food truck element, but expanding more of live entertainment and the dance hall aspect of it, of their business. This is the property here, it's zoned commercial. And here is the aerial. This is an outdated picture. Longhorn has since been worked on a little bit. The applicant has fixed up a lot of the parking. The building is in much better shape. I don't know if you've seen it recently. They're also proposing to do landscaping, install landscaping along Texoma Parkway within, I believe it's one year of the CUP actually being issued. That way, it'll give them a little bit more time to generate a little bit of revenue before having to go in and put in their landscaping. And that will be included on the ordinance if adopted. And here's the updated floor plan. So you have your stage, and directly in front of that, you have your dance floor previously. If you think back to when this first went through and got the conditional use permit from City Council, this was mostly seating. So that's kind of shifted. Everything else seems to be the same. So we recommend approval, and I'm present for any questions you may have, and I think the applicant is also here.
Questions to staff? Thank you, Bill. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? For the coupons?
Thank y'all for having me here. My name is Barry Reed. I'm the owner of Jake's Place, 4801 South State Highway 91 in Dennison. The reason why I'm here is, six months ago, I opened up Jake's Place for my autistic son, if you haven't already heard. I've done exactly what I said I was intending on doing. It's still a huge food truck park. We're still rotating our trailers about every seven to 10 days. The reason I'm asking to change to serve an alcohol in there is, everybody don't like beer and wine. I found that out pretty quick. As you can see, what I just gave you, we've been open six months. We've done weddings. We've done fundraisers for schools. And what I'm finding out is, a lot of people are rejecting the place because, number one, the beer and wine. You have people that are doing, I mean, I've already got people contacting me on more weddings and stuff, and, you know, they're saying, you only serve beer and wine. You know, we're gonna have to back out of this. We are, when I did my first proposal to this city, I basically said on Friday and Saturday nights I would do live entertainment, which is what I've been doing. I've been trying, I've kept everything since the day we opened the local. All of our bands are from here. We have tribute bands that came in this Saturday. We have Brooks and Dunn Tribute Band. It brings in all the people from our area just to come in and have a good time. Six months, I haven't had any issues inside the place. I don't really look at it as being a club. It's got a dance floor and it's got a stage, so you can pretty much analyze it any way you want. But if you also walk in there at 10 o'clock at night, you see people sitting around tables eating cheeseburgers and catfish. So it is a restaurant with an alternative kitchen, being the food trucks and everything. And I'm also asking if there's any way possible of extending the hour, an extra hour, because like on New Year's Eve, TABC, I contacted them, and they said at 12:01, after you do your toast and everything, you have to leave. And that's kind of becoming a little issue with people. The local bands, they like to start at 9 o'clock, and they like to end, you know, around 11:30, quarter till 12, and then they have 20 minutes to try to get out. But, yeah, I mean, Jake's Place is going great. I mean, if you're from this area, you, everybody remembers that, is the old Calhoun's and stomping grounds back then, and it's brought back a lot of people and a lot of memories to see what's going on in there. But it's not like walking into Calhoun's. It's like walking into a huge restaurant with an alternative, and people are seeming to love this thing. The sheets that I just gave you, you can see what it's doing. SNES did a fundraiser, cornhole, we have all of our games and stuff outside and inside. So, I mean, just trying to boost the community and have fun, and, like I said, for six months, we haven't had one single issue.
Barry, let me ask you one question. How many food trucks do you have out there now?
Four.
And you're gonna add how many? Did you say you're gonna add two more?
No, what we do, what we do is, if you put too many food trucks out there, the food trucks don't make money. So I own two of the food trucks, which they have to stay there permanently because of the TABC law, the 60-40. And then what I do is I alternate a different barbecue truck every weekend. Then I alternate a different Mexican food truck every weekend. And right now, when COVID was going on, it was very, it was very hard to get food trucks to come out. But now that COVID has kind of been lifted a little bit and everything, people seem to be a little more scarce to get outside. I've got like 20 or 30 food trucks that are in line to come out and alternate with me.
And I wanted to, I wanted to answer that question because I think it's important for the commission to understand that this is not gonna be a bar as such. We're still food-oriented, majority of sales will be food.
Well, the majority of my sales right now is food because people don't seem to like beer and wine.
Basically, you're no different in your operation, even though it's a food truck, than, let's say, what we're pretty real would be served food, and your availability to have a big turn on patio kind of thing.
That's correct.
Really no different.
There's no, I'm no different than the rig. I mean, the only thing is, I'm a bigger establishment, and I have a dance floor. I mean, Greg Guyman plays at the rig two or three times a week, and he plays in my place a couple of times a month. Only difference is, like I said, is my place is 13,000 square feet. And, but, yeah, it's just, I mean, I'm selling a lot of food. The food trucks are going pretty good.
We just want to reiterate that.
Yes, sir.
So I noticed that you have, there won't be any alcohol sales through the food trucks?
No, ma'am.
I'd be surprised if there were any food trucks that also did alcohol, but is there a state law about that?
There's no state law. It's my law. I don't allow it outside. We have, when you come out there, when the sun starts hitting 75 degrees out there, you see a lot of kids out there having a lot of fun, playing cornhole, playing washers. This Saturday, they've got axe throwing coming in with the Brooks and Dunn concert. No, ma'am, there will not be any alcohol. Now, you can take the alcohol outside and sit down and enjoy your evening, but I don't do alcohol sales. I don't allow that in my food trucks. There is no drinks outside whatsoever, even cokes or pepsis. You have to come in and order from the bar.
Any other questions? Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here to speak? Bill, you need to address that something?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, it was brought up hours of operation, that sort of thing. Our conditional use permit process on the city's end, we're allowed to set additional or specific hours of operation. And we received the hours in your staff report from the applicant, and if they want to extend that, we can make those changes. That's no big deal on our end. But keep in mind, TABC may still have separate regulations that would overrule kind of what we would set as a municipality. And then regarding the definition of a bar, if alcohol sales, in TABC's eyes as well, were to increase to 75% or more, then they would need another separate amended CUP to operate more as a bar and keep in line with our code as well. So those are the only two points. Nothing big right now, but just something that we want to make sure we're clarified.
And I have spoken with the TABC about the hours, and they don't have a problem with it. The city doesn't have a problem. All right, anybody else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval for the request of a conditional use permit to operate a dance hall with food truck park located at 4801 South State Highway 91, with the allowance of landscaping installation within one year of adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
I think we had two seconds. Just take your pick. Come here. We'll give it to you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Let's go to item 4G.
Did I miss a letter? Okay. Item 4F?
Oh, yeah, we're on it. I'm sorry.
Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to change the zoning of the subject property from light industrial zoning district to single-family five located at 313 East Nelson, case number 2021-023Z. So the applicant's requesting to rezone the property from light industrial SF5. The area is supposed to be developed in a residential manner according to our comprehensive plan. City staff recommends approval of the zoning change. And here's the subject property. South Crockett runs north to south, kind of near the other project over on Hull. You have Shepherd running east to west, and then Nelson also running east to west here. So while we do have some commercial, some light industrial along South Crockett, you'll see some automotive shops, things like that. You're also seeing a lot of residential development to the east. So there's kind of this band that runs along South Crockett where we're gonna want to keep that as commercial or even a light industrial for some of these uses. But once you get about 150 to 200 feet outside of that, it's all gonna be residential. And so you see some of that zoning here to the west. This property is kind of right on that line. So the applicant has already submitted a building permit, and I caught this in the review and gave him a call. So they're requesting to rezone this SF5. And we do recommend approval, and this is a public hearing, and I think the applicant is also here.
Okay, any questions? All right, anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
Josh Hawley. Pretty much, I think, Bill laid it out nicely. It's adjoining residential. Y'all essentially want it to be residential, so maybe it should be residential.
Thank you, Josh, for the compelling testimony. All right. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval changing the zoning of the subject property from light industrial zoning district to single-family five SF5 zoning district.
I'll second. Motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Now, item four G. I'm in a hurry.
Four G, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to change the zoning of the subject property from SF5, I'm sorry, from local retail to SF5 located at 415 East Woodard Street. So the proposed zoning district does comply with the comprehensive plan. City staff recommends approval. Here's the subject property outlined in blue down here along East Woodard, and then you have North Fifth Avenue running north to south. And again, you have this pocket of local retail. These are clearly meant to be residential lots, the way they're platted. And you can see, you have some, you have a church directly to the west and their property. You also have some more religious institutions to the north, and then predominantly developed and built out in a residential way. The legal description of this property was also off a little bit. It looks like some components of it have been broken off in the past. So the applicant filed for a minor plat, so pending rezoning approval. We'll also go ahead and get that plat filed so they can move forward and develop a house here. So I'm present for any questions that you may have. This is a public hearing, and city staff recommends approval.
Any questions? All right. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
My name is, my name is David Bashirz. I'm a superintendent for Patterson Premier Homes, and I believe that we could improve the community by building a home on that empty lot.
Any questions to speak? Thank you, sir.
Just a comment. This is exciting. The safety slots put back on the tax run, and we're actually doing something. It's just, you know, I don't know what, how many we've done today, and I've been doing it every, every month for a long time. So I'm just excited about these people that are making investments in our community.
Well, I think we're going to see more of it because this, this particular part of town, the northeast part of town, which is predominantly zoned light industrial commercial, which is developing, what, 99% residential already. We're going to be seeing a lot of these, a lot of these cases coming in front of us. So, but, yeah, I agree with you 100%. All right, so did we close the public hearing on four G? How about that, Andy? Okay, well, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail zoning district to single-family five zoning district. I'll second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? None. Motion carries. Item four H. Is that correct?
Item four H, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation to change the zoning of the subject property from commercial district to single-family five located at 520 North Houston Avenue, case number 2021-026Z. The proposed zoning district change complies with the comprehensive plan. City staff recommends approval. Here's the subject property here. You have North Houston Avenue, and that's going north to south, and then East and West Bond going east to west. So the property has already been developed with a single-family residence. Here's the zoning map outlined in yellow. You'll see this is the property. It's a, it's a square there on the southeast corner of North Houston and East Bond. So this is one of those, another area where it's mostly built out in a residential manner. However, it was rezoned sometime back for commercial use, and that never really took off. And so now existing property owners are wanting to clean up the zoning on their house, or builders are obtaining some of these vacant lots and wanting to rezone them for development. This is a public hearing, and I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Questions, Bill?
So the house still exists at this time?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Oh, so we're just changing the zoning?
Yes, I believe it's just-
A little commercialism? Okay, that's what-
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Bill? Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
Jonathan Earnhardt, Dennison, Texas. This house was built before we bought it. We just did some paint, cleaned up, rented it out, decided to sell it. But the zoning, I guess, it was built recently, 2008, was commercial with whoever built it. I'm not even sure who built it. So the buyer was trying to get a loan, and they're the one that blocked the loan. So we're just trying to get it zoned correctly. Any questions?
No, certainly not.
All right, thank y'all.
Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval changing the zoning of the subject property from the commercial zoning district to the single-family five zoning district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? None. Motion carries. All right, let's hit the public hearing. Staff updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, as you saw by tonight's agenda, we need to maybe look at a different approach on the single-family homes that are zoned commercial or lot industrial. So there's two avenues we're going to look at, is maybe the city proactively rezoning blocks at a time with the owner's permission, so they don't have to come in each time at all. But again, I would need to probably approach it at a block at a time, reach out to property owners and see if they have that desire to go in and have the city initiated at our cost versus them having to do it, and then would save time. Secondly, we also have the issue of these homes being classified as non-conforming. So if you have a single-family residence in a retail zoning district, and it were to burn down, being a non-conforming structure, they could not rebuild. So if we do have situations where they do not want to give up their commercial zoning, but they want to rebuild or add on the house, that's problematic for them. We've already had that situation in another part of town. So we're probably looking at bringing a zoning text amendment that takes away the non-conforming status from, from a residential home. I just hate the situation where their house burned down and they couldn't rebuild their house because they're not zoned for single-family. It would delay them to get that done. So I'm working with the city attorney on some language we'd bring back to you as a text amendment. There's also some other kind of things in the zoning ordinance I've seen that doesn't really make sense. They seem to be maybe a standard that maybe made sense back in the 70s and 80s, but probably don't make sense now. So Bill and I are kind of coming up with a list of some near-term and long-term changes of the zoning ordinance. I think a little bit more expedite the development in the city. But again, it would start with you. We'll have the public hearings and let you see our recommendations to the zoning ordinance.
John, I have one question concerning with blanket zoning, changing, because I've been saying for several years now, we need, that's what we need to do in most parts of town. But where we have an existing commercial use, if we blanket zone, then they become illegally non-conforming at that point. What would we do in the case of a fire or tornado or something that destroyed that particular business? Is there going to be some sort of an avenue that they can come back in and get an approval to rebuild illegally?
Well, that, that's, that's exactly the dilemma we face, and that's probably something I'm going to work with the property owner, because that's the purpose of having zoning is that ultimately, it's our desire that, that, that property at some point transitioned to the desired use of the property. So that's where we're going to kind of look at this block by lot, and sometimes even parcel by parcel, and see, does it make sense if we've got commercial uses scattered in residential pockets? How do we approach that? So that, that's something we're just going to take a look at.
I have a, kind of, it's more of a comment than a question, but that, on that same topic, we, I think it was decided that it might be too expensive to, because of those exceptions, to do the blanket. And I'm just wondering if maybe something in between where, like we saw today, some areas that obviously a whole block needs redevelopment and strange, strange property lines and things like that, where it looks like we could just go in and replat the whole thing. Maybe, maybe it's not totally blanket, but when one house triggers a situation, maybe that's the block that we'd look at.
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly the direction we need to go, is more strategic, looking at block by block, versus I don't think the city wants to go in and just, you know, blanket zone, you know, a quarter, half-mile corridor up and down the street. I think, first of all, we need to reach out to the property owners and see, you know, what they feel like the vision and the best interest of their city is, say, listen, it seems to be that the trend is rehabilitation of these homes. You've got commercial retail zoning. To us, it makes sense that we go ahead and take that, you know, care. They may have other ideas on the property. And again, I don't want to initiate rezoning if the property owners are against it. I think that's just, we'll get back to their timeframe.
In the case, and this is the problem I think we have with the residential side, but the majority of that whole district is all residential developed. But the problem we had was, is we had a homeowner that was selling their home, and mortgage company discovered that we were approving commercialism. So by the time we got it on the agenda, got it to PZ, got it to council, got it approved, they were almost in jeopardy of losing the sale of their property. And so that's going to, I think that may be a reoccurring event for us if we don't-
Yeah, and that's good. And that's what we'll explain to the property owners, is I think there's more advantages to go ahead and get your property, if it looks like the neighborhood is, is a stable or going to be a redeveloped, single-family neighborhood. It's to your best interest to go ahead and get the property rezoned to single-family. Because again, it's depend on the level of scrutiny by the mortgage company and the title company, because I can't tell you how many days I've, I've had calls from, you know, the property owner, they're at closing at four o'clock, and the title company's going, well, no, wait a minute, we just, we did our due diligence, and you don't have the right zoning for the property. Lastly, we have a lot of projects in the pipeline. They've not made formal applications, so they're not a public record. But I can tell you that there's a lot of development coming to town, certainly the strong interest in the residential market, also more of the master plan communities, and then commercial development. So I think in the coming months, you're going to be very happily surprised at some of the projects that are going to be coming up to your, on your docket for site plan approval.
I'd like to make a comment, too, like Mike, that I'm glad to see there's more activity on the east side of town, because it's been sorely neglected in a lot of areas for a long time. But it's a pleasure to go up and down all the streets and see all of the improvements. It's, it's, can't even keep up with it all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come forth, commission, this morning, I'm going to entertain a motion that we adjourn. I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion with a second. All in favor? We stand adjourned at 10:42 a.m.